Okay, going to you as chairman. Okay, uh, we're gonna open our meeting, it's uh, February tenth, two thousand fourteen. If I could get everyone to stand for the flag.
Flag of the United States of America.
And the republic, where she stands.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, if we could start off with a warrants, Joe.
Sure, absolutely, uh, we'll start off with payroll warrant, uh, number fourteen dash thirty-two for a total of a hundred and twenty-four thousand and seventy-nine and sixty-seven cents.
And I'll second that, all in favor?
Alright, next one is the bill warrant.
All upstanding, a payroll.
Okay, thank you. The next one is a bill warrant, uh, fourteen dash thirty-one, for a total of one million, two eighty-two, nine oh three and eighty-six cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, the last one is the deduction warrant, number fourteen dash thirty-A, for a total of twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirteen and eighty-six cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, I don't believe there's any submittals for the Bagnell School, um...
No perp- perp use?
Nope, I didn't see any crop, except for this one special license for a functional BZ. And that would vary.
There was a crop use one for the, for the pines.
Oh, okay.
But I think you need to, his last years with Babe Ruth, I don't know if you can figure out the way they requested, but they, appears that they used to take, walk the field for every day of the, so I don't know how you can do that, no request.
Alright, we'll take a look at that one and I know what it should be.
Think we might have to talk to Babe Ruth, well, I think we may have to call Babe Ruth and ask them to...
And explain it, and we'll explain our issues with it. Make sense?
Yeah, we probably should do it.
You can't, you can't just let people open end all these months, you know, when they really aren't using it all that time, so they have to get more.
Just to secure it.
Well, I mean, they haven't put one in yet for this year, right?
No, I'm showing you last years, and that one just came in today, so...
So if we had this one in place, we could just give them the dates and times that these people are using it.
You could do that, too?
And, um, you know, then I could just work around that.
Yep.
And that's, it's up to you guys if that's doable.
I like shorter windows.
Yeah, absolutely.
It gives us no flexibility or anything else.
Right, we're over committing way too far in advance.
And it's not fair to, I mean, here it is, but the middle of February.
Right.
Well, I know, I know people have, um, gotten permission to use a field, other teams, and then when, then they're told they have to use the high school, and when people go and check, there's nobody down here for the day that they want it, so we have to get more specific with dates.
Well, this one here is asking specifically from, um, August, uh, May till August, Sundays from three till dark, and Thursdays five P M. to dark.
Right.
They're on, they're asking for two nights.
Two nights, from three in the...
From May until, uh, yeah, three in the afternoon on Sunday, and, uh, Thursday five P M. to dark.
What is night? Does that mean before the lights go on, or after the lights go on?
Well, there's no lights on this field, so this would be just, you know, dusk, this is the favorite field.
Well...
It's for North Shore Men's League.
Which is a step above, like, Legion or something, right?
Yeah.
Like, twenty-year-olds?
Subject, yeah.
And it's a Grove and Roosevelt, asking.
Subject to the field beam there, is it gonna be built?
Well, don't we...
No, we have that field.
Well, you have, that's one we already have. Okay, thank you.
But don't we...
Babe Ruth last year.
Let our kids in town have a preference over other leagues?
Yeah.
Is that, is that a policy, not a policy?
That, that's basically what, what's been happening, I, I believe we had been signing it up to the Pines Babe Ruth, uh, or to the Babe Ruth League, from April thirteenth to May thirty-first. And it looks like they did use Sundays.
So Thursdays and Sundays, three and two dark?
Five till dark on Thursday.
Yeah, five.
Three till dark on Sunday. So, we may wanna double check, or just run that by the Babe Ruth and see if they can work around that, so that we can...
This is a correspondence, could I ask you guys to take a few minutes and read this?
Well, let's finish this license.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Yeah, let's do that.
No problem.
Is that a wedding, or a...
It looks like for a family party. Um, so it is on...
Should be on the front page, um, talk...
Event, two twenty-three of this year, at BZ Park.
It was a four-hour time.
From nine, uh, five to nine, roughly fifty justs. So they know all the laws, regulations.
Yeah, that's their insurance, I don't know.
So it's, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to approve the party for the divorces. Go ahead, Betty. Mark, okay.
Make a motion that we approve this, uh, one-day license, uh, to the Delarotto family at BZ Park, and the hours are...
Five to nine.
Five to nine, and they'll have a bartender and a detail officer?
A detail.
Yes.
And their insurance binders.
And the binder for insurance for one day?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 We also have a request, um, from Bill Dunn, to be appointed as an alternate to the zoning board.
Is this an open for alternate, BZ?
Sure.
Okay, I, um, make a motion that we appoint Bill Dunn to the zoning board as an alternate for this time, and he will fill this out until what, uh, June thirtieth?
June.
One year, one year.
I'll second that, Joe.
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, and a letter from the road commissioner to, um, requesting permission to deficit spend an additional twenty-five thousand on the FY fourteen snow and ice account.
Did that have to go to finance, Nancy?
To both, U N.
The finance, okay. I'll make a motion that we, um, approve the deficit spending for twenty-five thousand for snow and ice budget. It's probably gonna come back at us again the way the mother's going.
I'll second that, Joe.
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The planning board has purposes.
They do, they'll need it, too.
And we should, you know, thank them again, the road, but in pretty good shape, all with us. Okay, next up, we had, we're almost on schedule. Mike had requested to come in and speak to us, and before you do that, we've been meaning to thank you for filling in as the interim chief during the time. We hadn't had a chance to get you to commit a thank you, but thank you again for your service.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
You're on.
What'd you do? Oh, okay.
Just a small one.
You just added more money to the snow and ice budget, so it gets a little gross to compare.
That's a good start, yeah. Uh, thank you for taking the time, uh, to, to let me come in and speak. I, uh, I was a little reluctant initially, uh, but, uh, as a result of the meeting that I watched on television, uh, back on the twenty-seventh, I was caught off guard by quite a bit that went on in that meeting. Um, and I'm really only here just to really discuss, uh, the issues that pertain to me, uh, and me personally, and how I perform my job. Uh, I think there were some factual items and accuracies, uh, that were presented, and I just wanted the opportunity, uh, to address those, uh, with you. As a point of reference only, uh, you should know that I was requested to come in and speak with the chief a week before your meeting, uh, and at that time, he, uh, advised me of his intent to submit a proposal to you regarding this, um, uh, change to the job description for the chief's salary, increase of hours. Uh, I did convey to him at that time that, uh, I could not in good conscience support that, however, I certainly wouldn't, uh, fight him on it. This was something that, you know, he felt that he had to do. Imagine my shock a week later when I turned on the television and I watched his, my position as inspector being discussed, and, uh, and my other duties as the deputy chief of the department. And I have to tell you on just a more visceral note, that of all the weeks for me to have to deal with something like that, as we were leading up to a very dark anniversary for our family, that's what I had to deal with. And that is just so wrong on so many levels, I can't even begin to verbalize it to you. But, uh, forgive me, I, as you know, I speak from the heart, I wear my heart on my sleeve. That's my style, it's maybe, uh, one of my biggest faults, but, uh, that's who I am. Um, if you don't mind, I'd just like to just get to the points and, uh, for your consideration, um...
I just wanna point out one thing.
Sure.
Before we go too far. I think we found, you know, with a situation that took place like the last few weeks that you were on,
Mm-hmm.
with a strong chief position, I don't know how much of it is anything that comes to us, you know, anything that's going on within the fire department, so I just wanted to, you know, remind everybody that...
Yes, and again, I...
Our limitations.
I understand that, and that's why, in fact, if you read my email when I made the request, this is to talk just about...
Okay.
What was said in that open meeting.
The, the other thing was, is I think a lot of people get the wrong idea from that meeting. I had people come up to me and say, "When did we raise the chief's position to fifty thousand a year?" And I said, "Well, to my knowledge, we haven't." I said, "The chief came in with a proposal as to something he wanted to do, or to bring forward. We were just here listening to that. We weren't making any determinations or changes, so..."
I had not heard that, but, uh, I, my, just so you know, my phone...
You have to go to the deli counter at the grocery store if you wanna get that.
Well, okay. Uh, my phone has been ringing off the hook at my house. Some people, uh, wanting clarification, and I, I'm, I'm as much in the dark as they are with a lot of this. Uh, I do have to tell you, when you discuss the inspector's situation, again, that one just totally knocked me off my feet. Uh, this is a job I've been doing for fifteen years for this town. Um, you know, I've been, went out and got the certifications to do it, the training, the classes. I think you were left with the impression that we have a number of inspectors here, on the fire department, that do multiple types of inspections. That's not the case, uh, in fact, I have that distinction. As long as I've been on the department, I am the only inspector that has done, and is certified to do all type of inspections, schools, uh, businesses when requested, and then, of course, the smoke inspections, uh, uh, oil burners, tank installs, tank removals, underground tanks, propane tanks, uh, I do them all. Uh, and I had thought that I have done a very good job with it over these last fifteen years. The other impression that I think you all had too is that this line item for inspections is a salary, or an hourly type situation. That's not what I am, as the inspector for the fire department of this town. I'm fee-based, uh, there is a set fee, and, uh, it's very similar to the models used in towns around us. You, uh, you pay when you pass. Uh, when we show up and do the inspection, we get paid for it. Now, when you call, or I call you to schedule the appointment, I typically will do a, uh, a run-through with you so that everything's where it should be, and if there's any questions or problems, we can take care of them before I get out there. I don't charge for that, that's a service that I provide, you know, we're a service-oriented, uh, organization. We give that to the people in town, and I've never had a problem doing that. Sometimes you gotta go out and do a pre-inspection for them, particularly with our elderly. Uh, that first phone call, sometimes you can figure out, I gotta go out there and make sure, and help them out with this. So you go out and tell them, "Look, go buy this, 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 and, and call me when you get everything set." Again, that's what it's all about, I don't charge them for that. But when we talk about a bargain for what we're getting, you know, I get, on average, it, 'cause it is a sliding scale for the type of inspections, between twelve and seventeen dollars an hour, I believe, or not, or hour per inspection, it's a set fee. That's it. Uh, you're not gonna get a better bargain than that.
On average, year, per year, uh, how much?
Uh, actually, the, as my inspector's s- salary item, after my hourly, or fees are combined, will typically come in under the budgeted amount. Occasionally, if we have a new, uh, something like Nichols Village, or Whitestone, uh, those years are the ones where I went up and over the top, just because of the number of units. But typically, we, we come in under...
So is it around three thousand a year?
Yeah, it's not a lot. The type of model that we use, uh, we're not unique, it's the same model that surrounding towns, and even full-time departments around us use. Uh, chiefs do not typically do the daily inspections, and they do that for some, a couple of reasons. Uh, they typically use their senior officers, uh, to conduct those type of inspections. Uh, it's a check and balance of sorts, and it's also a way of appealing, uh, decisions. When I go out and do an inspection, if you fail, you may feel that I'm not being, uh, lean enough, or I'm, I'm being too critical of whatever the given situation is. You can then appeal that to the chief. The chief comes out with another set of eyes and looks at it, 'cause he's the ultimate authority in a situation like that, uh, 'cause he just delegates to me, uh, but he can change, and he can override my decision. Or, in most cases, in fact, ninety-nine point nine-nine percent, uh, he'll, he'll back up, um, the inspection. I'm known for being tough, but also being fair, and, uh, again, it's rare that I've had to go back to the chief to get a determination like that. Uh, the other thing, when we're talking about check and balances, again, other departments use the same type of model. When a chief signs off, particularly for new developments, uh, a set of plans, you want another set of eyes to go out there and inspect. You know, when we talk about continuity, or, uh, you know, keeping everything the same, that would be... That's all provided for within the CMRs and the building code in Massachusetts. I inspect to the code. That's it, that, you know, that, that's what we do with them. So if there's anything I, I go out to something that was signed off by the chief, I can then report back, going, "Hey, chief, I don't like the looks of this, uh, something's wrong here." Uh, and you can reference that with the Bagnell School, that's a perfect example of that. And, of course, we made it work, uh, and that was a collaborative effort, no doubt. But those type of checks and balances are the kind of things that people in this town deserve. Again, we're a service organization, we're not there to shut people down, we're there to provide solutions for them. And this type of model, and again, it's the same model that all the towns around us use, uh, and it's worked very well for me, as long as I've been an inspector. The issue was raised, in the, and I viewed it in a derogatory fashion, that the means by which I schedule inspections for people, uh, that I do it, uh, at my convenience. And I kinda resented that description of it. As you know, on my days off, that's when I do all this stuff, and I'm around a lot, but I make myself available to everybody. My phone's with me twenty-four seven, I answer it all around the world. If people call me in Europe, I answer it, and I answer their questions. I've never had a problem doing that, it's just part of the job, and I've always accepted that. Brokers, the schools, uh, the contractors, oil burner technicians, they all have my cell phone on them. If they have a question or a problem, they, they call me without hesitation. I have a very good working relationship across the board with all those people, and I've been very proud of that, you know, over the last fifteen years. When I show up on these calls, or these, uh, inspections, I show up in some type of uniform, sometimes dressed down, sometimes up. I purchase out of my own dime, I carry badges to identify me, so, you know, people don't wanna see some guy walking up to their door with no identification on him, you know. But again, I've always accepted that as part of the job, and I've never had a problem with that. Uh, are there any questions that you have relative to that inspector, uh, issue? Again, that was a total shock to me, that, uh, that was being offered up as a solution to, or within that proposal.
I have a couple of questions, um, and thank you for your, for your clarification on, uh, on, uh, on what it is that you've been doing, Mike, for our town. You said you were certified to do inspections?
Yes.
Tell me a little bit about that, I'm not a...
The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, through the state fire marshal's office, um, just, uh, within the last few years, instituted a program whereby you can obtain, uh, the fire inspector basic certification. And that gives you a very good groundwork, uh, and working relationship with the issues needed to perform all types of inspections. Up until I got that certification, uh, anyone that had seen me, I carry a metal clipboard, and it's a thick one, and people say, "Why do you carry such a clip?" Because that's what fits the manuals in. Before that, I used to be in that manual, having to reference it all the time, in fact, there's about four of them, including oil burners. Uh, that type of certification really helped to bring the inspector duties all into one place, and it was a ver- it's been a very valuable tool, particularly over the last couple of years as the deputy chief. Uh, before that, um, it was always just classes, going off for classes, they offer them, uh, you know, Stowe would offer a class over and hand over. And it just brings you up to speed, uh, I'll be honest with you, the biggest one is oil burners, it's the most technical. I'm not in the trade, so the classes like that are imperative for someone like me, uh, to learn a lot, and so you know what you're looking at when you go in there. You know, you've got supposedly the licensed guy who's at the top of his game, that's what he does for a living, and then I walk in there and look at his work, you know, you gotta have something to back that up with, you know, so... And again, it's, it's worked out very well in that regard.
Jimmy used to do those before you did, correct?
Jeff York did the oils before I did.
Oh, okay.
And I don't even, I think the chief did them, 'cause all the cards before Jeff were all signed by John Carlton or, uh, for oil burners, uh, for John and Harold.
So in, um, in your estimation, it's not customary or, um, a tradition in, in the fire services for a fire chief to do inspections?
Well, I wouldn't perhaps go that far, um, I just know from personal experience with my peers in the communities around us, other deputy chiefs, a lot of times captains, uh, and sometimes lieutenants, particularly with the full-time departments, uh, they do the daily inspections.
Okay.
That's been my experience.
And the appeal process is something that would have to be preserved, and, and in fact, it might be diluted if, uh, if the inspection services is not delegated to, let's say, uh, another leader in the department?
I suppose, um, and I, I can't take credit for this, I didn't design this, it was actually John that, you know, I came in under him, and he brought me up to the ranks as the inspector, uh, in, in short, short time. I was, I think I was on for four years when I started with, uh, oil burners, and then rapidly advanced through the other, other inspection areas. But John really set the groundwork, uh, but again, I have friends that are deputies of the communities next to us, uh, and these are the type of things that they do.
Going back to the certification, it's not a requirement, but it, it, but it's something, it's an enhanced service, enhanced, uh, credential, and you, did you acquire that with your money, or did the department do it?
I did that, uh, I did do that on my own dime, yes.
What other certifications are, uh, what other things would inspectors have in the fire service?
Again, I can only speak from my personal experience.
Right.
Uh, at this point in time, you could, uh, go further with, uh, inspector one, two, and further in the new system, you can go to multiple modules. Uh, but up until the most recent thing from Stowe, uh, through the firefighting academy, it was all done, classes that you could pick up here and there.
And my last question, thank you, um, so each inspection is twelve to seventeen dollars each?
Yes, if, actually, that's not, actually, it's twelve to nineteen, I believe, for, I, you would think I'd know, and I make a, I, see, I make my rate, I, I don't make that rate all the time, but, uh, it's in that range.
Is that per inspection, or per hour?
No, that's per inspection, it's not an hourly rate, it's not a salary.
What's the average inspection cost of the...
We charge twenty-five dollars.
On each, even buried tanks?
Yes, and the, uh, and those vary too, but, uh, the excess monies go back to the program.
What did you just ask, I didn't hear?
Uh, on the, uh, the underground storage tanks, I thought they were more money to inspect when, uh, people remove it, and, uh, probably only in other towns.
Uh, actually, no, but the removals are more, you know, a bigger fee to the, uh, to the venue.
Thank you for answering those questions, appreciate it.
Uh, the other issue I had, that, um, again, this just pertains to me, uh, for the first time since the changing of the guard in October, uh, I heard my job description, and it was different from everything that I had done as a deputy chief for two years prior to that. Uh, and it's, again, very different from any other deputy chief position within the towns around us, in our area.
Where did you hear it?
I heard it in your meeting.
Oh.
You were given a, uh, a description, I forget the, the context in which it was asked. I believe you asked it, you asked about any changes to the structure, Joe. Will there be any, with this new proposal?
I remember the question, I, I asked the question as to whether or not the proposal for reconfiguring the fire chief's position to a larger role would that negatively impact on other positions?
Yes, but, um, obviously, it sure impacted the inspector, uh, but the other issue was that you were then asked, "What is the hierarchy of the department?" And that was actually a good question. We were described as a paramilitary organization, and that's very accurate, uh, with the chief at the top, and for the first time I heard, and then you have the deputy chief that is off over to the side, and his sole responsibility is, in the chief's absence, to run fire operations. First of all, in a paramilitary organization, that is not what you do with your second-in-command, and it's not what any other fire department in this area does with their second-in-command. Uh, again, I was, first time I heard that, my job description described that way, uh, and, uh, it was very disconcerting to me. I took the liberty of grabbing a few job descriptions just off the internet to see, maybe I'm off-base here, maybe it's just this area has these things. No, they're all the same buzzwords. In the chief's absence, the deputy is expected, as second-in-command, to fill in for the chief in all aspects of the department in his absence. You know, you were told that, "If there's a problem down here with the men in the stations, they only go to their captain, they don't go to the deputy chief, even if the chief's not around, you don't go to the deputy." Uh, that is in direct contradiction to any command structure that I have ever seen in the fire service, and certainly in any paramilitary organization, and I was very bothered by that. That job description, and my visceral analysis of it, uh, has reduced my, uh, authority in position within the department, and I was, again, very, first time I'd heard it. When we talk about, um, you know, these types of situations, when I was your acting chief, I, I made it very clear to the officers, that when I'm not around, the deputy chief assumes my responsibilities. I guess that's the way it was under John. Uh, I gave the deputy the command vehicle, he's part of the command structure. People should know he's in command. Now, apparently, that's not how we're gonna be conducting things, and again, it's the first I heard of it, uh, and I was very, very surprised by it. What surprised me more was that, I believe you asked, John, um, later, you asked, "Well, why are you only taking half of the deputies, your old deputy salary for..."
Eddie asked.
Was that, oh, it was Eddie, I'm sorry. Uh, and the answer was, "Well, that's to, to pay for my replacement, 'cause that replacement's only gonna cost half as much." And that took me aback, because now, jeez, we already have the deputy that's already been reduced in his authority.
I think I can explain that, though. I, I believe what the response was in regards to was, he was basically saying that, at his pay rate, the replacement person coming in would be a private, and they were... And they would be making a reduced rate coming in. Because he was gonna operate with one deputy. And he wasn't gonna have a deputy.
That could, that would be my interpretation-
That was, am I right or incorrect?
Okay. My interpretation was that it was different. And it just didn't make sense to me. And I didn't know if that was an issue that you wanted to address as well with me.
I don't recall asking that question. I'd like to see the minutes. Not right now, but you could change. Because I don't think I'm that savvy about-
Did I? Well, maybe I did, I don't know.
It doesn't matter.
I thought it was you.
Was it?
Yeah. But, but again, perhaps my interpretation, watching on television, was different than from being here. Those are my concerns with what was presented. I'm not here to discuss any other aspects of the proposal as it relates to anybody else, unless you'd like my input on that you're prerogative, and I'm available to do that. My concern is that based on the behaviors that I saw, again, I wasn't requested to be there for this, which I thought was a bit shocking. I feel that I was entitled to be here for that, particularly when I was being discussed in my position and my duties. My concern is that with this dilution of authority and then taking away, I mean, at the best, I think it's perhaps procedurally not well thought through. But at the very worst, it seems somewhat retaliatory, and that concerns me deeply. And I hope that that is not a direction that we're headed in here. Particularly after me coming here to speak to you about these issues. But again, I'm available to you if you need to, clarification on any of the things that I've brought up. Or anything that you might need clarification on from that meeting.
I haven't been watching that meeting on television. I really haven't. I've heard it's been shown quite a few times. I don't know if we should ask for a response at this time from Bob. I don't want it to get adversarial anymore than it is.
No, that wasn't my intent. My intent was just to-
No, I understand you've had questions and concerns, and Bob had his opportunity, and now you've come in and told us how you feel. He did a presentation, we didn't vote to accept that. We've listened.
Right, I mean, it was an informational meeting as far as I was concerned.
I think we all went home and looked at numbers and, you know, we had quite more questions, you know, after you leave, you always have more questions.
Absolutely. Again, I just felt compelled, just some of the facts I thought needed to be addressed here.
Well, let me just mention to you, we appreciate the presentation that you made, and I'm sure we did, and I know that we had expressed the thanks to Bob for making his presentation. And there's, there's a conflict of opinion as to what is working and what is not working. However, you did bring up an important word, and that concerns me, and that's, you know, retaliation. And we have employee bylaws in this town, and I don't believe that anybody's exempt from them. But one thing that we don't know, I don't know at this point, at this moment, whether or not if if anyone had a complaint within the fire department, exactly how that is handled. I know that the fire chief, the strong chief, and I haven't read the law completely, that he would be the final arbiter of agreements, for example. But it remains interesting to me as to how that would be handled if the complaint was against the chief himself. And I'm not willing to test it, I don't know if that's something that would be a concern.
That was not my intent with meeting with you tonight. I'm not talking about filing anything. That was not my intent. This was for informational purposes, with the items that were discussed that pertain to me. Retaliation, that is a strong word. I used it, so I have to take ownership of it. And that is perhaps a bit strong. I would hope that it's strong. That it is something less than that, at a very basic level. But a lot of people have approached me with this issue. And again, that fueled my desire to come here on live television and have my day. People thought that it needed to be done. And I agree.
Did anyone else have anything to say, correct?
I just wanna put a point, well, what I'm, the certifications. The Fire Academy has long had a certification for Fire Inspector. They used to have Fire Inspector One, Fire Inspector Two. I'm the only Fire Inspector certified. I'm certified with Fire Inspector One. A few years back, they decided to go to the Fire Prevention Officer. They have Fire Prevention Officer Basic, Fire Prevention Officer One, Fire Prevention Officer Two. Basically, the FPO One took the place of the Fire Inspector One. And the Basic is basically an online class designed for company officer level. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that, the certification process.
That is, that's a valid point.
That's all.
It is semantic certification, he's exactly right. The certificates that I have are not certifications. In fact, I can't remember what it actually says on them. But he is right. The certifications are done at much higher level.
I just wanted to clarify that.
So as far as the one you were talking about that you have, which one was that again?
I have Certified Fire Inspector One level. So basically, that follows the FP O One, Fire Prevention Officer One, which is basically designed for field inspections. The FP O Two is designed for supervisor level of your inspectors. So if you had a large inspection division, your field inspectors, your company officer would be your basics, because they're all about looking at things, bringing feedback back to the certified fire prevention officers. The Level Ones would be the ones doing the field inspections, the Level Twos would be your supervisor level.
And at this point here, are you involved in any of that process here?
We do not have, well, through the Fire Academy, anyone can, if you're in the Massachusetts Fire Service, you can become certified at any of those levels, as long as you have the prerequisites.
And where would those be required? I mean, for the inspections that Mike's been doing, these certificates he has, are all that's required?
Currently, there's no requirement for having certification. They're pushing it for professionalism, but there's no, there's no requirement.
There's no requirement. Anyone else? Thank you very much for coming in.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to get your history.
Thanks for coming in.
The only thing we had left on for tonight was a bargaining with the Mass Cops. I'm sorry, not Mass, May Cops.
May Cops.
His Mass Cops.
So I believe, thank you all for coming.
Thank you for coming in.
Before you do that, Joe, I wanna do that, look at the-
Yeah, I saw this evening.
Yeah, I can-
Good night.
Yeah, didn't I send it to your houses or outside?
Yeah, no, I did read it.
Good to see you, bud.
Thank you, guys.
Just to give you a little bit of a background, the school, a couple of years ago, had requi- the school district had requested the towns a certain level of money to build the fields with.
I remember.
Okay, and what's happened recently now is, to make a long story short, is that there's now a proposal that was actually approved by the school committee to go back to the towns for additional monies for the fields. And I just wanted to bring this to your attention. Because it does have, in my opinion, does have an impact on additional assessments against the town. And the school committee did also, on my understanding, at the last meeting, it's suggested that this is something that should be presented to the townspeople at town meeting coming up this year. I don't know what the mechanism is, and if that's even underway, but-
Wasn't the other amount of money, that was a close, it was a rollover of the loan? It was either seven hundred and fifty or eight hundred thousand.
Yeah.
And that was to fix the track and do-
Right.
And then the theater got done right away.
Absolutely. I remember that presented, the track. Kids are on a track, it's a regulation, the tennis court. Greg presented something to them where it could be done, and he gave them a number, and so now they want another half million dollars?
No, I think it's another, isn't it closer to a two million dollar project now instead of the seven fifty's?
Two point something. So Mike, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, because on Thursday night, there's a regional finance committee meeting that's gonna take this subject up. And it's important for you to understand who is proposing and who is supporting this. Because I have some concerns, which, you know, we can talk about later, so. At another time, if it becomes an issue that we can bring forward, so.
This week, your meeting?
Now, just so, also, you know, there was a supplemental reserve of four hundred and ninety-five thousand that was being held for a few years, because, you know, the district, the school district was in a financial straits and the state required it. So they successfully were able to
Bring that out?
Bring that back out. Also, the user fees, half of them is, are being proposed to be dedicated for the field. So there's two additional funding mechanisms that weren't there two years ago when we agreed to how much we were going to provide for the field. So those two are going to be also available. So I think, you know, it's something that, I think we wanna be in front of this issue, that if people do wanna present anything at our town meeting, I don't know, we form an opinion on it. I don't mean tonight, but I'm saying just to be aware of.
Do you have a estimate on the user fees?
I don't, I don't. They were supposed to be phased out.
I thought they were gonna, they, they've redes- decided to, instead of eliminating the user fees, they were gonna cut them in half, I believe, is what the terminology was.
Right.
Not that they were gonna use half the money towards this project.
Right.
I think they were looking to cut the user fees in half, and-
And now they're, they're going to do that, but the other half they're gonna use for the-
So they've found a way to use it?
Yeah. So the bottom line is this, I believe, and I don't know for sure, but I believe that there's going to be a request at some point in the next three to five years for a new high school. And so I'm very concerned about getting these projects approved in isolated form, and then another request comes in later for something bigger. I think it's important that we have a strategic view. Not just us, but I would ask our school committee members to go back to the school committee and present this idea that, you know, we would like to see a little bit more transparency, and that this is communicated. I found this out through the newspaper. That's what, that's what worries me. And that we weren't, you know, informed of this in advance, and we haven't been invited to any meeting, that could impact us. I will tell you that Doug Jolina, the school committee member, was the only one out of nine members who voted against this proposal. And he did bring this to my attention. So that's what this tries to do, is it would've worked if you could click on and actually read the article, because that's what I'm referencing in the email.
I couldn't.
That's okay, that's all right, no. That's okay, just wanted to-
I did send it to you, Betty, you should have it in your email. If not, I'll resend it. You saw the article, it's on the-
I did, yeah. That's probably where I saw the half of the user fee. They were looking to reduce it in half. Okay.
Why would they do that?
Well, basically, I think where they're at is, they were trying to, the new superintendent was trying to work with them to eliminate the user fees, and I think the bus fees too, correct? Because people were getting upset that not only are they paying their taxes, but they're paying, you know, up to fifteen hundred dollars a year for a kid to play a sport, or their family to play in the sports. And then another hundred eighty per kid if you're out of the distance to come to the school for the bus. So the goal was to try and eliminate the thing that people didn't like the most. So it looked like they were making efforts to go in that direction, and then this new stadium proposal came out. And I think what Joe's saying is that if they do decide to put some sort of a stadium in the front, that eliminates their ability in the future if they were gonna put a new school on the site. At times, they've talked about they'd put the school where the football field is, they'd put the school where the front is. They wanted to buy the house, or whatever it was they wanted to do, and, you know-
Before the price got tracked up.
Right. But as soon as you put a stadium in the middle of where the field hockey field is-
You take away your ability from the-
Right. So now you'd probably have to go to a new site in order to have a new school. Which means then you'd have to build another sports facility at the new school.
Yeah, I have a concern about credibility. We, we agreed to give the school district X amount of dollars. I don't wanna be in a position to go to my townspeople and say, "By the way, can we have more?" Because that's gonna be a credibility issue, at least I would feel that for myself, I don't know if you would agree with me. And then if I have to go to the townspeople and also say, "By the way, we also need money for a brand-new high school", they might not be so friendly to me, because they might not trust me, because the first time I asked them for money, then I went back and asked for more. So I think, I think that my opinion is, as Doug said in the newspaper article, the school should do what they can with the money that was already agreed to by the three towns. Get as much as you can done, and then come back for more later. And I say perhaps even wrapped with a new school building request a few years later. That's, that's, so we're in unison on that.
Do you think they wanna build on the site they have, or are they going to be looking, or is that all just up in the air from?
I think it's pure speculation, but I think the, I think the, I believe it's gonna be on the site. And it's gonna be a renovation project, I don't believe it's-
More like the Bagwell School?
Yeah, I don't believe it's going to be, you know, raise the high school to the ground and build from scratch, I think it's gonna be a renovation. Project.
Wasn't there a discussion once about if they built a new school off-site, they would use that site for all their fields?
I thought so too.
Wasn't there, I thought?
I thought so too. The Sabre High has, you know, they have their Sabre Stadium away from their high school.
Well, I mean, this board, not just since I've been here, you've been pretty consistent. You ask the townspeople for money and you don't go back for more. You try to prevent that scenario, under any circumstance, whether it's an individual-
That's what they expect from us.
That's what they expect from-
In this town, especially.
So I never thought I would take the position of Donnie on this one, but here I am.
See how fast you learn?
Okay, all right, thank you for that. I just wanted to bring that out, and bring it to your attention, so. Maybe we could have Doug, maybe we could invite our school committee members to come in and get, and give us a little bit of-
So it would be Jack, Doug, and-
Jack, Doug, and Lisa, maybe they can. Remember, out of nine, only Doug voted against it, so this, you know, it should be interesting to hear from them.
I just sit in those seats.
Yeah, I know, I sat it up for six years, as you know.
Maybe the superintendent could come talk to us.
Yeah.
Let him know how we feel. Maybe our colleagues in R and R could invite them to the rest of the-
Well, he could then explain the whole proposal.
Exactly, yeah.
If they're gonna cut fees, how that's gonna work, and, you know, what's the ultimate goal, are they gonna cut them completely? You know, and, I mean, already, we've seen that he's trying to stay within the constraints of the budget, so. Would, it'd probably be good for the townspeople to know what they're losing in order to stay within those constraints. And he could probably explain it the best. Instead of hearing it at a town meeting, maybe he could hear it a little while ahead.
Yeah, especially now, it's not too early to. Thank you.
Thank you for that, appreciate it.
So, so the final issue we have, which I do feel we probably will do that in executive session. So after that, we'll be coming out and closing our meeting trace, so thank you very much for coming in.
You're welcome.
Okay, make a motion, we go into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One A, Number Three, to discuss strategy with respect to upcoming collective bargaining with Mass Cops. And I would make that motion.
Second?
Hold it there, Brandon, yes?
The more yes?
I will leave you guys, you're not coming back into reconvening to a regu- meeting, correct?
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
And it looks like we're gonna be meeting Tuesday, you do?
Wednesday?
Wednesday? Wednesday, you do?
Wednesday, six o'clock?
Yep.
Yeah, you might wanna come along. Before, the first one's right at six.
Right at six, so maybe five thirty, we should arrive there.
Try and get here as soon as we can, yeah.
Great, no problem. Thank you.
And then the next, the next meeting with the rest of them would probably be the next Thursday, because I was Joe's-